Okay, we are recording.
Great, okay. Um, why don't we begin, well, let's begin with any public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
Um, I don't see any hands raised and if you do have a public comment that's not on the agenda, you can unmute yourself at this time and if you can give us your name, we can, um, we can let you speak on any items not on the agenda.
If we want to speak on an item on the agenda, does that come later, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'd like to speak on the 95th Street, but I'll let you, let me know when that comes up. Thank you.
Um, it, would it be helpful, Steve, if people in the chat identify the item they'd like to speak on and you can start keeping a list? Do, do folks have the ability to write in the chat? I see I do, but I might as a host.
Yeah, I would probably refrain from using the chat, um, because it's a little hard to manage minutes and chat and, um, but.
All right, so people can raise their hand, use the icon to raise their hand when the time comes.
Yeah, and I, since I'm host, I have a little bit different screen than people, but if you have like the button at the bottom called reactions, um, use any sort of gesture you can find, a hand, a thumb, a clap or whatever that might be, but I think at this time, I don't, I don't see that we have any public comments that our items are not on the agenda.
Okay, understood. All right, so then why don't we move to item number one, which is our study session on 95 First Street? And let's start with the, um, with the staff report, please.
Um, and I'm going to introduce, we have Radha Hanagriev, sorry, Hiagriev, who is a consulting planner for the city, um, for this project. She'll be giving the staff presentation, but I did want to mention for the, for the, for the commission and the public attending, this is a study session for a preliminary project review. So this is really the opportunity for early feedback for, uh, for a project. We're not making any decisions on this project tonight. It's really just to give input to the applicant, um, who will later come through with a formal applications for entitlements. There are, you know, some, some, uh, elements of this project that will go through further evaluation, particularly a density bonus, um, concessions, which gives the, the property potential benefit for seeking concessions for development standards, but all of that detailed evaluation will come later. So I just want to make the commission, who, members who have been through this process before and the public kind of a, uh, an idea of the, how this, how this project will, will progress through a potential entitlement process. So with that, we'll give you the staff presentation followed by the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Good evening, Commission. My name is Radha Hiagriev. I'm going to share a screen, share my screen to just walk you through a very brief overview of the pre-application submission for 95 First Street project. Uh, can you all see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. Um, tonight, we would, I'm going to introduce just the project team and give you a very brief overview. The bulk of the presentation will be led by the applicant and their team, following which we are all available for questions, comments, and, and, and any feedback that the commissioners might have for the applicant so that they can move that, so that they can progress from the pre-application into a formal proposal. Um, as, uh, the city's team, we've got Steve Golden, who's the interim services planning manager. I'm the consulting senior planner. Just managing the project from the applicant's team is Wendy Hills Property Venture, Mike Field, and the owners, I'm not sure if they hear on the call, but we're, I believe Lisa Ring, who is the applicant's planning consultant, she would be the one that's leading the presentation. Um, the project in specific is located at the, at, on a half point five one acre corner lot, um, along First Street and Shasta Street in downtown Los Altos. Currently, what you see here is the aerial overview and a street view that we are, that I, I obtained from Google Maps and Google Street View. It has a two-story commercial building currently, uh, in, in the existing location and the conditions today. The Los Altos zoning map, sorry, one second, I'm going to clear my screen. Yeah, the, the subject site is zoned downtown commercial and, um, the current proposal that we are reviewing in the pre-application stage is proposing a four-story tall sixty thousand square foot, approximately sixty eight thousand square foot commercial and residential mixed-use proposal. The proposal is showing the, 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 the building to be sixty-two feet, two inches tall. The, the first, second, and third floors are shown to be commercial use and the fourth floor is presented with ten residential units. Nine of them are one-bedroom units and one of them is a studio unit and two units have been set aside and dedicated to below-market rate units. Um, there is a, a portion of this proposal that's below grade and those, there are two, two, two levels below grade, which is dedicated for parking and, um, I will be handing over this mic to the applicant for them to share with the commission more details and more nuanced, uh, details of the presentation at this point. And I believe it would be Lisa, Lisa Ring, who can, who will be presenting and Lisa, let me know if you can share your screen. Is it Mike or Lisa?
Yeah, hi, Radha. It's Mike Field.
Hi, Mike. Okay, sorry, I didn't know it was you.
Oh, no problem. We're, uh, Lisa's a lot more fun to listen to than me, trust me. But, um, okay, perfect. We've got the presentation up here. So it's good to be with you, uh, tonight, members of the commission. We're, um, excited to be talking about this project. So just a little bit of background on us. Um, I have either worked in or lived, uh, walking distance to downtown Los Altos for over twenty years of my life. And for those who might remember, I worked at How Sweet It Is, the candy store, a long time ago, and would spend a lot of my high school lunches at Los Altos High School in downtown. So once we, uh, so, once I was married and started having children, we lived on Palm Avenue and, you know, would walk down to the farmer's markets and, uh, my kids' favorite places, Area 151 in Bumble and, of course, Posh Bagel. So I love downtown Los Altos. I've spent a lot of time there. My brother is a business owner in downtown. And so I have a lot of affinity for the community. That being said, uh, one of the things that we really try and focus on at Windy Hill and the, is building downtown buildings that are of a, and especially high quality and also that are mixed-use, generally speaking. We have developments in downtown San Mateo, downtown Belmont, downtown Palo Alto, downtown Redwood City, and downtown San Carlos. So, um, you'll notice all of our developments are in a downtown. It's really, uh, what we've spent our careers trying to understand, the different dynamics of the downtown, the pedestrian environment, um, shared parking, transportation demand management programs. All these things are things that we're very familiar with and that we've spent a lot of time understanding what makes for a good downtown development. But, oh, Los Altos is especially special as a downtown. It has a lot of charm and, and so it's one of the reasons we're so excited about this particular project. We, uh, are currently building a few projects on the peninsula. Uh, one is an apartment building walking distance to California Avenue in Palo Alto and another one is a mixed-use office residential apartment building in downtown San Mateo. Uh, you already saw the aerial, so, uh, this property, everyone in Los Altos knows this property because at one time or another, we dropped our mail off in the mailboxes right out front. And so as, you know, old timers will remember, the post office used to be across the street until the condominium building was built and that condominium building's four stories tall and then the, um, condo building behind us is three stories tall. The project benefits hugely by Shasta Street. It allows us to create a really attractive, um, frontage and corner and it also, uh, will allow us to have the parking garage entrance off of First Street or not on First Street, I should say, and instead of off of Shasta, so that all that, uh, and that does two things. One, it makes it easier for cars to come in and out of the garage and also it makes the project frontage on First Street much more attractive without a parking garage entrance. The existing two-story office building's about eleven thousand square feet with all surface parking. Let's see, where are we? Okay, so, uh, we talked about the height, four stories in height. You'll notice though, that on First Street, the third story is set back with an outdoor balcony and the fourth story is set back even further with outdoor balconies. Um, and so again, that's trying to create this pedestrian scale. You'll notice the plants and the trees in the renderings when we get there and, uh, we're trying to create an attractive pedestrian environment where when you walk by this building during the day or at night, the recessed windows, the landscape, the exterior lighting all make it for, for a pleasant experience. There's two distinct entry points on the building, one for the commercial, which is elevator served, and one for the residential, which is also elevator served. And so you'll see that when we get down to the renderings and we'll walk through that a little bit more. Twenty percent affordable in the housing on the fourth floor and, uh, in addition to that, the building will be lead silver best practice, which will include bicycle parking, lockers, showers. All the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems will be state-of-the-art essentially to, to, you know, consume the, a minimal amount of utilities. These, these newer structures with the, with the, uh, high-performance glass, the roof systems, et cetera, are incredibly environmentally efficient. Uh, see, we will be working with, um, traffic consultants to develop a robust TDM program. So I don't know how familiar the commission is with TDM programs in Los Altos. All the other cities that we work in have pretty stringent TDM requirements or if they're not part of their code, they're suggested. And so transportation demand management is a big deal. And, uh, there's lots of different, uh, things that we can do to incent employees and residents to use public transportation. The first of which is building the building in downtown where you can walk to restaurants and walk to the grocery store and walk to places rather than getting in your car. There will be two levels of below-grade parking and one thing that might be unique in Los Altos is, uh, we are offering our parking garage, the office parking would be free to the general public evenings and weekends. So, um, uh, you know, that is a, a consideration. Um, with the design, we endeavor to really respond to the surrounding structures. I would say it's a similar architectural vocabulary, but the building is distinct. It doesn't, um, copy anything, but it certainly fits in. We're seeking to really create a vibrant mixed-use environment where folks that live in Los Altos and want to work in Los Altos are able to do that in high-quality office space and folks that can't afford to purchase or don't want to purchase either a condo or a home in Los Altos are able to rent. As you, as I think, you know, everyone's aware of, you know, the huge lack of rental housing in Los Altos, but specifically in downtown. And so, uh, we're, we're pretty excited about that opportunity to bring some more rental housing to the downtown. Let's go ahead and go to the first rendering. And so this rendering is showing you the, the office corner. So the, that archway is the office entrance. At the bottom of the corner, you'll see the recessed balcony on the third floor on the First Street side and then you'll also see the upper balconies. This outdoor space is really fantastic for the office user and for the residents. And so the residents also actually have an interior courtyard where they're able to sit outside in the open air with no, uh, and enjoy themselves. You'll notice that we pulled the building away at the corner to create this inviting corner element and it also complements the corner directly across of the street. And you can also see here at the back of Shasta, the garage entrance. This is a zoom in of the, let's see, go to the next rendering. There we go. Uh, this is a zoom in of the corner. It kind of gives you an idea of, uh, the pedestrian environment and, uh, you know, what that little courtyard is providing on the corner as you walk past, uh, the property. And you'll also notice that by creating that two-story element on First Street, it makes the building much less imposing as a pedestrian walks by on both sides of the street. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the apartment entrance there. So the apartment entrance is on the left-hand side. This is where apartment users will enter and exit the building and they have their own private elevator that'll take them to their units. One of the things that I would mention is that, there's a tremendous desire in Los Altos from when I lived there and, you know, today to have high-quality retail and to support that retail in a way that retailers who come into the community, who are independent business owners, can get enough foot traffic to be able to sustain a retail business. And so what we found in the other downtowns is this high-quality office space brings folks there for lunchtime and during the day when sometimes downtowns don't have as much activity. And so, um, I know that, um, Los Altos Grill, for example, is, uh, you know, open for dinner and, uh, some, as these office users create more demand during the lunchtime hour, it helps to support retail and encourage them to function, uh, not just during dinner, but also during lunch and breakfast. Let's see, the next rendering is kind of an aerial view and there it is. And so this gives you an idea of the overall architecture of the building. You know, one thing to consider when you're looking at the overall scale is the apartment building, um, at the end of Shasta there is sunken. It, its grade level property is actually lower than the property up along First Street. So although it's three stories, it reads differently in this rendering. But this gives you a good idea of what the, uh, of the overall architecture of, of the building. One of the huge needs in Los Altos for office space has been created because most of the office space is over fifty years old in downtown and a lot of the new office space that has been built in the last twenty years is owner-occupied, like the Packard Foundation and, and, and other buildings like that. And so if a company, if someone lives in Los Altos and wants to work in downtown and they have a company and they need to recruit talent and all of that, they need a high-quality office environment and that's really what this building is, is designed to provide with incredibly high quality of finish. And so, uh, if you look at the more modern building at the corner of San Antonio and First Street, that's the kind of quality that we're looking, that we're seeking to build here. Although it's not a modern structure that we're seeking to build, it's more akin to what is around us. It's a similar quality of construction. Go to the next slide there.
Mike, just, yeah, just to let you know, you're at like thirteen minutes, so maybe you.
You know what, that's actually, yeah, that's, uh, uh, would you like me to stop or would you like me to finish up the four plan slides?
I would maybe wrap up in the next.
Oh, that, that's easy.
No, I think that works and then we'll also have questions. So, uh, yeah, you know, we'd like to hear from the public and then we'll give you an opportunity to respond to some of the public comment. So.
Right. And certainly, you know, we definitely are, are, are looking for your thoughts and guidance on the project. So just going through the four plans, I think this slide is repetitive, but it shows you an aerial view of kind of that courtyard and where the entrances are and where the ship receive area is. Uh, again, that's one of the huge benefits of Shasta Street for this project is all, all of our backdoor stuff, ship receive, garage entry, it's all off Shasta. So we won't be impacting the traffic flow along First Street from that perspective. The next floor plan shows you not much. It shows you the core and the, and the outdoor patio and how the building's set back. And then the next floor plan shows you the residential layout and you'll notice the central interior courtyard, that's open air, which is a great amenity for the residents and then you'll see the residential layout. We could have done more units here by going to all studios, but in looking at the Los Altos market and, and what the supply of one-bedrooms is in the downtown, it's essentially non-existent for rental product. And so we thought that that was the way to go, but we're open to the commission's thoughts on the unit mix. And so that's all I have for you tonight and I certainly appreciate your time and we look forward to your, to your initial first read and feedback on the project and are here to answer any of your questions. Our whole team's on the, on the call, so no matter what your questions regarding, we should be able to address it.
Okay, why don't I open it up to the planning commissioners? If you guys can put your cameras back on, I can see you and see who's, and we'll just go around and whoever has questions of the applicant.
Um, sorry, can I go or?
Yeah, please.
Oh, um, I had a couple of questions. One, the first one's for staff, I guess. Obviously, I think the applicant mentioned the post office drive-through. I couldn't really tell from the staff report, but what would be the, what would be the, the situation with that? In terms of, would it be moved or, or how, how do we go about that?
We had an initial, um, uh, technical advisory discussion amongst, uh, public works and engineering about it and we, I do believe this is to be very close coordination with USPS and that needs to be vetted out early in the conversation itself. The current proposal shows the renderings without those existing mailboxes and that is, that was one of our concerns when we had the initial read of this, uh, the proposal and it would be pertinent for the applicant to, you know, reach USPS and begin those conversations because, first, I think the drive, I do believe that is city right-of-way, but the, we need to look at the civil plans. This, we don't have enough information for us to go down to that detail, but that would be our first comment when we respond after this discussion.
Okay, so it's, I guess it's unclear who owns that area exactly, if the city owns it or if, okay.
Yeah, it appears to be in the public right-of-way. So, um, whether there's some sort of an agreement or otherwise with the post office for that driveway, presumably they would be, they would be moved. And there was a discussion, I think, with the First Street, the streetscape plan and, you know, originally the post office was across the street and then it got, and then it got moved. So there would be probably another, a discussion about where the, the post, post office boxes would, would end up in, in the downtown.
And then the only other thing, I, I know the applicant said that Shasta Street would be mainly used for the prays and the drop-offs. So for residential, because sometimes with projects, we, we see kind of one side, whether it's, you know, whichever side of the street for residential guest parking or something like that, would that also be on Shasta Street or what's the, what's the idea there?
So, uh, the project isn't providing guest parking for the residential, um, on-site. I don't believe, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong.
Corrected, it's not providing that. That's one of the.
Yes, so there's no guest parking in the garage. Now, I would say this. We are going to allow this parking garage to be available to the community free of charge nights and weekends. So any guest parking for the multifamily during nights and weekends would be in the parking structure, underground. But any guest parking for the apartments during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, would have to be on the street. Um, I, I don't know if that answers the, the question.
Yeah, so, so basically there'd be spots in the garage that would be deeded to obviously certain occupants of the office, but, but there could be spots that could be used for guests.
Yeah, so, so there will be spots that are solely for the apartment users.
Okay.
And then spots that are solely for the office users during Monday through Friday business hours.
Okay.
But those spots after six PM, any day of the week will become open to the general public and/or guests of the multifamily users or, or the, of the apartment homes and then of course, on the weekends and holidays as well.
Okay, got it. That, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple. Can you describe how you decided to sort of have three floors of office and only one floor of residential as opposed to two and two or some other mix?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And so we, um, we have, we're fairly experienced at these mixed-use buildings. Not a lot of developers do them. Part of the reason why is because multifamily, apartment home rents are probably half of what office rents are per square foot. And when you go to build underground parking structures, the cost is, is very high. And that's why in the downtown right now, the only folks that are willing to do that are selling for-sale housing. Whereas we're not interested in for-sale housing. It's not our business and we think that candidly there's other needs in Los Altos besides for-sale housing. So we would like to provide for-ran office and for-ran housing. So when you look at the economics associated with building that underground parking, you have to be able to, to absorb that cost with the office space so that you can build the residential. So the office space is essentially subsidizing the construction of the residential because the residential on its own couldn't be financially justified.
And you also just talked about the need for high-quality, modern space in Los Altos for office space. Can you, is that some of the genesis behind the very high ceilings and other things here that you have?
Well, there's two things going on there with the ceilings and so we were trying to be responsive to some of the guidance that's in, uh, what plan? to some of the guidance that's in, what plan is that in, Lisa? What's the title of the?
The Objective Design Standards.
Yeah, so the Objective Design Standards in Los Altos call for a very tall first floor. And so it's, it's taller than than we need, no question. But we were trying to be responsive to that, a design standard that was requested. But to the extent the commission provided feedback that said, hey, we don't need you to have, I I believe it's seventeen feet on the first floor, which is significantly taller than a typical office building would require. And so to the extent the commission says, hey, we'd like you to ignore that and bring the building height down, that's something that we can certainly look at doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah.
Dave, go ahead.
What, what, what is is done to ensure that if you're building an underground parking garage of that size, it doesn't disrupt the land? You know, the surrounding land?
Yeah. So without getting too detailed into the construction specs, it's a very common practice. It's been done quite a bit. And we essentially, before we start to excavate the garage, we create the the exterior walls of the garage before we even start digging the garage. So through using large boring drill bits, we we drill one piece at a time and backfill them with concrete and you essentially create an underground wall. And then as you dig, you you put boarding bolts through those exterior walls to essentially use the dirt on the other side of the wall to hold it up, to keep it from falling in on itself. So, for example, in downtown San Mateo, we just built a garage in the exact same fashion and it's pretty, pretty standard construction practice. But it's a good process. And, you know, again, one of the benefits to this location is we're on First Street, we're on Shasta, there's a, there's a, there's parking and a drive aisle in between us and the neighbor to our left. And then, I don't know if you're all aware, but there's an eight-foot easement at the back of the property for there's an alleyway that essentially was dead-ended on Shasta. And so this property is pulled eight feet off the property line, or excuse me, our building is pulled eight feet off the property line in the back. So again, that brings us further away from the adjacent building right behind us.
And what what's your sense of how disruptive the the staging will be for the, in that area during the construction?
Yeah, again, that's a huge, that's a huge benefit of Shasta Street, right? We're gonna try and do everything from Shasta. Again, we we would need to work with Public Works to put together a plan that shows how we're going to not disrupt First Street as much as possible. But our intention would be to try and stage and do everything from Shasta.
All right. Oh, and sorry, lastly, what, you're, you're there's a lot of, you know, complaints that it's disrupting the quaint, small-town feel. What, how do you respond to that?
You know, I, I, I know some of those people who the complaints have come from and I I remember when nobody wanted Starbucks because it was a chain store. And I remember when How Sweet It Is went in, when I was a teenager, that that no one liked the neon signs out front. And I remember when people were up in arms about the post office being torn down. And so I've, I've, I've seen Los Altos grow and I've also seen some things happen that were kind of disappointing. I think that sometimes we focus, you know, on the wrong things. And for example, when I see some of the newer projects and I see that they have surface parking or they have, right, so I'm so so when you're walking down the street, you're looking at headlights, I mean, that's, that's not in my mind, you know, what good downtown a development should be. So it's one of the reasons we've spent our careers really trying to understand the unique needs of a downtown. And, you know, almost every downtown we've built buildings in, the first building, folks are always a little questioning because they're not used to mixed use, they're not used to these TDM programs, and they're not used to how we architecturally soften the overall mass of the building. And I'm confident that once this building, if it were to be approved, is constructed, that many of those people would walk by this building and say, you know what, this is actually pretty nice to have nice sidewalks and plantings and trees and windows that I can look through and see people working. And so I am confident that many of the folks that have a concern of that you just stated will see that this project will be, will not detract in the least, will will contribute greatly to continue to create a wonderful downtown environment. But I understand that some folks, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so not everyone's going to agree with that.
All right, any other questions from commissioners? Okay, I've got a couple. So Mike, thank you for sharing a little bit about your connection to Los Altos. I was, you know, I think that there is often a misimpression that developers are coming from the outside and they don't have a sense or sensibility about our town. And so I think it's helpful when an insight, when the developer is an insider, that 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 information is shared, because I think it's means that in my mind, that you have both a connection and a commitment to the town. And maybe just a different vision. I also grew up in Los Altos. My parents moved into our, their home when I was two, so I was raised in Los Altos myself and now I'm raising my kids here. But the big, the big issues I see relate to obviously parking and height. That's where we got a more letters than we have in like two years on this project. So I kind of want to go through some questions I have related to parking to see if there are, there are ways to improve on it. So have have you considered a lift system? You know, it's, a lot of projects don't have to dig as deep and they are able to park more.
Yeah, so two of our buildings that we've recently constructed have lift systems in them. One of them is an apartment community and the other one is an office building in downtown Redwood City. They have their pluses and minuses. And so a- as we were conceptualizing this project, we certainly looked at that. Our first goal with any downtown development is to try and understand how effective TDM programs could be. Because they are far better than creating more parking stalls. And and I'm very sensitive to the fact that nobody wants parking right in the neighborhoods. Nobody wants parking on the streets. And so I I think from a residential standpoint, we're, we're definitely covered. But I think from an office standpoint, you know, we could look at doing more parking stalls. But then how's the public going to use the garage nights and weekends? And so that's one of the trade-offs that we're really not excited about is we think that it's a benefit to Los Altos to have structured parking for free. You know, the city has some great parking lots that someday, who knows what's going to happen there, but this is, you know, a significant investment of underground, subterranean parking. And for the city to be able to use it forever, I think is really valuable. Once we do parking lifts, that'll be precluded. Because we would, it would be very difficult for the general public to safely be able to utilize those lifts. So that's just one example of the trade-offs that we have with parking lifts and one of our concerns with with installing them here.
Okay, so going, going back to the idea of TDM, which for those that aren't familiar is Transportation Demand Management. You know, how how did you arrive at the calculation of cars that you think you need it? And how did, like, I've, I've been on Los Altos's subcommittees on parking and it, it, there has, an argument has been made that our requirement related to office parking is out of whack. It is not consistent with what some other towns require. So to figure out actually what the need is, is the, is key. And so how are you, how did you arrive at that number and why are you confident that? Because while I agree that it is beneficial to have additional parking in Los Altos in the evenings, it's, you know, a ghost town. And so there's plenty of parking. Parking is no, no one has a hard time finding parking at night, maybe weekends during, you know, certain events, there is a challenge. But so that's the first, first part of that question is how do you arrive at that number? And the second is, how do you envision this city? Like, is there a model of the shared parking that you're, that in Los Altos? That you're imagining this, like, emulating? That, yeah, why don't we start there?
Okay, and I may have to ask some clarifying questions, but first the, the demand or the numbers we came up with are based upon experience with prior projects. And, you know, certainly as part of this project, a traffic study and, you know, TDM analysis will be performed and and so we can we can dial that in and feel free, Lisa, if you have anything to add there. I'm, I'm just at the fringe of my competency level when we start to talk about traffic studies. But but so that's really, we would anticipate verifying those numbers essentially. But those numbers come from the experiences that we've had. Tell me, just clarifying, what did you mean by shared parking?
So this idea that you would make your parking available to, I assume there'd be signage that says, you know, parking available below we get, you know, after a certain hour. But is there, is there some, is there another location in Los Altos that you're, like, that you're seeing that work well?
I've never seen anyone in Los Altos do that. We've, we, we were the first developer to do it in San Mateo. And it's worked out really well. But I'm not aware, and someone feel free to speak up there, I I'm not aware of any subterranean parking that's shared in Los Altos, right?
How do you do it in San Mateo? Like, is it, is it purely signage? I mean?
Yeah, there's signage and it's open.
There's no security, security barrier, like?
No, 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 the gates come up and the garage is completely open and the garage will close at midnight and the gates will go down. And if someone's car is still in there, they'll have to call us. But
And it has similar signage to other garages in downtown San Mateo. So that other, you know, so that there's wayfinding signage.
Yeah.
That it's available. And it's kind of looks and feels like some of the other garages in San Mateo. So that's a little bit unique to that, but it helps people be able to identify that there's parking there. That's okay.
In when we did it in San Mateo, they wanted the garage to appear like a city garage during those hours. So the signage is the same, everything's kind of the same as a city garage.
Okay. And then, you know, something else, would you consider when you bring this back, measuring out the spaces with a different dimension? Others towns, most other towns in ULI, the Urban Land Institute actually suggests eight and a half feet dimensions for parking, but in Los Altos, it's, it's nine feet wide. And I wonder how many more spots we could gain if we actually did it in line with best practices and what everyone else is doing.
Yeah, we could definitely.
I would be interested in knowing how many more we would capture in the same amount of space.
Yeah, so we, we did look into that. We will look into it again because I don't recall off the top of my head. Sometimes it, these garages are, you know, when you put in the ramp and the drive aisles and everything, you don't pick up as much as you wish you did, but we will verify that again because to the extent we picked up additional stalls, that would definitely be something we would be fine with doing more, more efficient stalls.
Got it. Okay, and then, you know, I think this was kind of talking, turning to the height issue, you know, the I think, you know, one of the comments that we got from a previous planning commissioner who's an architect is talking about how the the plate heights on the first floor are seventeen feet and subsequent floors are fourteen. It just feels really excessive and massive. And so I'm wondering how much how committed you are to those and whether you're where you are on that.
Yeah, what, tell me about the seventeen feet in your guidelines. Is that something that that you are flexible on if we were to come back at a significantly lower height on the first floor?
So I did want to comment on that. I I'm not sure where the applicant is coming up with this seventeen feet. So, so in the current, which was adopted fairly recently, fourteen point five, two point one one zero, which is provided in the agenda report, those are new objective standards and
Fourteen point five? Oh, no, you're reading me a code section. What's the?
Yeah, this is the new, this is the new design control standards. And from my understanding, there, for the first floor, it, it's required to be twenty-four inches taller than the typical, I'm just reading it, minimum twenty-four inches taller than typical upper floor-to-floor ceiling height where ground floor is non-residential. There was, I think, the, sorry, let me finish. I think the previous code, I believe, had a minimum, I think it had a minimum twelve-foot height requirement for the first door, for the first floor, first story. So it's just twenty-four inches taller than the typical upper floor. And then the question is then those upper floors, what, what the floor-to-floor or floor-to-ceiling height would be? So I just wanted to provide you what the code actually says.
Okay, so it was six, that's great. Thank you for that. To the extent that we wanted to, so we really would like to provide the residential here for various, for a lot of reasons. But if it, if height, overall building height is the prime focus that we need to try and work on, is the commission open to us not meeting that twenty-four inch requirement and just making all the floors the same height?
So I think, Steve, if you could, what I'm actually hearing is that we have a fourteen-foot plate height for the first floor and you're at seventeen, maybe because there was a misunderstanding?
The, the prior zoning called for sixteen to eighteen.
Okay, right. So right there, we we gain three feet, like, it sounds like you want to do what you're, what the max required is and we would prefer that you don't exceed the max. So we're at fourteen feet rather than seven, three feet left. Am I, do I understand that right, Steve?
Yes, I, I don't, I don't think that the code has been, the previous code has been referenced properly. It it doesn't really matter at this point because it's, it's what the current code says. And I think the discussion was to have the first floor taller than the upper stories to give to give it some emphasis. And for potential uses of that first floor, that's different than the upper stories. But so, so for example, if your upper story floor-to-ceiling height was ten feet, then your first floor would have to be twelve feet. Or if it's eleven feet on on the upper stories, then your first floor would be thirteen feet. So there's no, there's no overall requirement for a seventeen. It's just dependent on those upper stories, so.
Okay, and so, so we do want to see the first floor two feet taller than the other floors.
Okay, so this, this will go into discussion a little bit. You asked a question, we'll get to it at discussion. I wanted to ask clarifying questions for this part and then open it up now to the public. If there are no additional questions, I'd like to hear from the public. And then we'll come back to you and then we'll have a discussion and hopefully planning commissioners will be able to give you some guidance and feedback.
Thank you. So just so we keep this organized, if you can raise your hand as, or any other gesture, then that will help us and I'll try then that will help us and I'll try to call on people and unmute. Unmute while you're being called. If you can provide your name, if if your name's not up on the screen. And then, once we get through those people, if there's somebody that cannot do the reaction, then we'll we'll just ask people to unmute at that time. Also, I I see that there are some comments in the chat. We're just just to let people know we're not picking up those comments. So if you have a comment, then you might want to make it as as part of this, this section of the meeting. Also, I wanted to let the commission know, and you're aware of all the emails that you had gotten on this with regards to the public correspondence. There was, I think, about thirty at this point, public correspondences that were directly emailed to you. Most of those have been posted on to the agenda webpage. Not all of them made it by the time we could kind of aggregate and get them up. So there are a couple late comments that were probably emailed to you but not posted on the webpage. So just in case people are concerned about that, but we'll try to get all those comments up after the the meeting at due time. So again, if you can raise your hand and then we can also tell, we can also consider how many people are going to be public comments and we can, the chair can then allocate time to you. And Chair, would you like to say how much time?
Yeah, sorry, how many, how many speakers do we anticipate?
Um, I have four right now, but five.
Is it usually three minutes or two minutes?
Um, it just kind of depends on.
Okay, well, we Sorry, how many?
Yeah, either probably two or three minutes. I I would assume that there might be more speakers as 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 some of the comments progress, but.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we go with three minutes?
Okay, let me.
And what I would suggest is, rather than just be repetitive, if you agree with a prior speaker, just let us know you agree with them. It isn't necessary to use your whole time to make the same point.
So I'm trying to share my screen and see the list of participants and I'm, okay. So the first person I see, and can you see the timer?
Yes.
Okay, so the first person I have is Anne Paulson, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, this is Anne Paulson. I love that this is a rental project. We we need rentals downtown. But I have a question that I hope will be answered. I've seen a lot of chatter about this project and a lot of comments about why we give a height variance for this building and how the city should deny this variance. But they're not asking for a variance. This is a density bonus concession. I hope someone will explain what the applicant needs to demonstrate in order that the city would have to grant this. Or under what circumstances the city could deny it if that was what the city wanted to do. I don't understand how this works, and nobody else I've talked to understands how it works either. And I'm sure it's going to come up again in future projects, so we really need to understand. So I hope somebody will explain it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker that I have is Roberta.
Hi, this is, this is Roberta. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. So, hi, everyone. So I am truly opposed to this project and mortified by the height. There is no reason on earth that this building should be higher than the building across the street of forty five feet. I'm glad that you did address the plate heights, you know, the seventeen feet on the first floor and the fourteen feet on the second floor, which is totally unnecessary. There is a drastic need for more parking. I think, as Monique mentioned, even if we, we probably pick up three or four parking spaces and you know, it's it's really, really unacceptable. You know, we have a lot of restaurants now where we've lost ninety one parking spaces in downtown and the cars are going into the residential neighborhoods because we've lost parking. And the other thing I want to say is, we do not measure height in relationship to stories. So that we measure them in in relation to feet. So sixty two, sixty two feet plus elevator shafts, which will go up another ten feet, is ridiculous. First Street is five feet lower than the property behind. So you're taking away, you know, with an office space, you're going to have, as a gentleman mentioned, lights on day and night where people can, you know, who live across the street, showing on them. This is a massive building with, you know, the whole First Street is the narrowest street in downtown. We, you all know that. And you know, the building is not to human scale at all. And, you know, I know that residents in Los Altos will push back. So please don't make us go through this because we will if we have to. This building is unacceptable. It does not follow our zoning codes. It does not follow our objective standards. So please stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also, just for the record, wanted to mention that Commissioner Roche did join the meeting. I believe during the, either the staff report or the applicant's presentation, so just wanted to make sure that's on the record. The next speaker that we have is Chris Nicholson, if you can unmute yourself.
There, commission members. So I I came on, I grew up in Los Altos thirty some odd years ago. And out here visiting my my family and my mom still lives here and has for all that time. And if there's one thing I've learned about development in in Los Altos is that, you know, it's it's a matter of balancing many different interests. There are a lot of different residents in this city with a lot of different needs and a lot of different concerns, as we've already heard from two or three commenters. I feel like this project does an incredible job of balancing those concerns. We do need more underground parking in downtown because more underground parking means less of a need for surface parking over the long term. And I'm sure everybody would prefer to have parks where we have some of our large surface lots right now. Not now, but you know, in ten years or so. The second thing is, you know, we need more apartments. I grew up in this city and there are no, basically no rental apartments in downtown. There's there may be some, but I couldn't have told you when I was growing up where I could rent if I had wanted to after college. Every city should have some places for young families, for individuals working in downtown who just moved here to to rent. This building does a great job of of balancing that need. And and to the the commenter who who just participated, saying that this building doesn't resemble human scale. I I've been all around the Bay Area. I've been to Palo Alto, Mountain View, San Carlos, Redwood City. I've also been to Boulder and many other small towns around the same size as Los Altos and with a similar downtown feel. And I don't know what that person is talking about, because this feels very natural to what I've seen in other cities with the same kind of downtown character. And from the renderings, it seems like it would fit perfectly with what we have in downtown. So I want to applaud what the what the developer is doing here. I think this absolutely meets the needs of of the city I grew up in, and I think it's going to make the city of and First Street a much better place. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I have a get my oh, hold on a sec. There we go. Our next speaker is Elaine.
Hi, thank, yeah, my name is Elaine Haight, and thanks for letting us speak today. I'm also interested in maintaining the small town feeling in Los Altos, and in that respect, I'm interested in reducing automobile traffic. Small towns don't have a lot of automobile traffic and a lot of parking lots, asphalt all over the place. And I know that more parking means more traffic. We all know that. It's not about just parking lots. It's how do the cars get there into the parking lots? So I'd like you to consider disincentivizing automobile use. A lot of people can walk, whether they're going out to dinner or whether they're going to work or whether they're going to the grocery store. This apartment building, the people that live there could be charged for parking by the month. And so that if a family decided that it was actually less expensive for them to only have one car, maybe, or maybe there could be some zip cars in that parking lot that they could could be shared and rented. So I'd just like you to consider not having more parking and in that respect, you know, encouraging more active transportation and and just staying in Palo Alto. I mean, and sorry, it's just, I do live in Los Altos, but just staying in Los Altos for dinner or for your job instead of having to always be driving everywhere. That's the, you know, one of the big points of having downtown parking. The other, I mean, downtown housing units, extra housing units in downtown. And so the other thing about maintaining the small town feeling is having a variety of different types of housing. In small towns, you don't have every house be a large four bedroom ranch style house. That's not a small town. Small towns have a variety of different types of housing. And that's why I think this is a great project. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Our next speaker is Terry Kocher.
Sorry, it's Terry. Can you hear me? Can you?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with Speaker Properties and Mike Field's projects. They build very nice projects. I'm not concerned about the quality of the project. I'm concerned about the height and the parking, much like the other people. And I'm also hoping that this group can kind of look at what else has been going on in the town and try to work with the objective standards that we have, so everybody can be happy and it'll be a nice project when it gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janine Valdez.
Hi there. Thanks for letting me speak. I love the underground parking instead of fields of asphalt. I hate fields of asphalt. I love the rentals. We need them. I do wish there were a couple, two bedrooms for families, but I can accept the one bedroom in the single studio configuration. I think complaints of the naughtiness of First Street are just unfounded. We have to put our buildings somewhere. We need to bring in commercial revenue. We need to bring in walking people and young workers. This is an awesome idea. I don't oppose lowering plate heights if if the design objectives allow it. That's fine. I do want to comment that, you know, Safeway, I thought, was an example of shared parking, but a key difference between that and what's being proposed is that no residents live in the Safeway building, at least not to my knowledge. My question is, if the garage is shared and open to the public, which is a great idea, but how are residents and their cars kept, the residents themselves and their cars kept secure and safe during this sharing period? I wondered if that question could be answered. And at the end of the day, I believe that we can rally as many or more supporters that will will welcome housing and more retail and commercial space here in our city than those that oppose housing and commercial initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Maran Umarani.
Yeah, thanks for having me, guys. So yeah, I'm also speaking as a Los Altos native as well, so went to Alman, Los Altos High and all that, and then, you know, went to undergraduate and graduate school in Southern California and just recently moved back. And one thing I've noticed throughout the years, especially as I made my visits for Christmas and Thanksgiving and also and all that, is just the relative transient nature of all the the retail spaces that Los Altos kind of has to offer. You rarely see a single business last for more than a year. You'd be hard pressed to find it, I would say. With that being said, I think, you know, the the Advent are bringing forth this this construction, this project might again, offer and bolster those types of retail. So I'm all for it, and I'm also all for the underground spacing, so parking space. So with that being said, those are my thoughts and yeah.
Thank you very much. We have another speaker, Richard McCaffrey. Go ahead, Richard. Richard McCaffrey, I believe you're unmuted right now. Try one more time, Richard McCaffrey. We'll try to come back to him. We have another speaker, Steven Janob.
Hey, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Um, yeah, so I'm another local Los Altos kid. I went to Santa Rita, Yegan, Los Altos High, and recently moved back from college, probably like three, almost four years ago now. And, you know, I noticed kind of similar things as Mayron, that, you know, A, there's just not a lot of retail life and overall, you know, just activity in downtown Los Altos, the town generally closes down very early. There's not a lot of my friends that want to spend time in Los Altos, and most of my friends from school can't afford to live in the town. There's no rentals or anything along those lines that really meet, you know, a young person's needs, and there's not a lot in the area to keep kids that were born and raised here, you know, draw them back to the town. And, you know, I think developments like, you know, one ninety five First Street would be, you know, a great addition. And, you know, I'm totally in support of what Windy Hill has planned. I think they're going to build a beautiful building, and I think it will, you know, add a lot of community benefits to the town. And that's all I have to add. Thank you for letting me speak.
Uh, thank you very much. And I don't see any other speakers. David McCaffrey had his hand raised, but now I don't see, I, he lowered his hand, but if if Richard, sorry, Richard McCaffrey, if you'd like to make a comment, you can. Looks like your hand went back up. You should be unmuted at this point, so go ahead. I don't know if he's having some other technical problem. So Chair, that's all the speakers I see hands raised. If we just want to open up anybody that wants to unmute themselves. I can't find a a reaction or gesture button can.
Often times, after we have public, sorry, is someone about to speak?
Hi, this is John Bear. I put my hand up about a half a dozen times and would like the opportunity to speak. All right.
Go ahead, John.
So I had the privilege of spending nine years on the Planning Commission and actually was involved in the review of one hundred First Street directly across the way. And we spent a lot of time working with the applicant to come up with a design that met the needs of the applicant and the community and took into account bulk and mass and height. And a lot of the comments you're hearing from the public are talking about the benefits of underground parking. Well, guess what? Every building that gets built in Los Altos these days has underground parking. Well, guess what? Every building that gets built in Los Altos these days has underground parking. And they talk about the value of rental units, and I'm not disputing that. But I am disputing this building at 62 feet, and even if it comes down several feet, the design of the building is not of human scale. The entranceway is not of human scale. The window design is not of human scale. The bulk and mass is completely out of scale with the town. The parking, you know, the applicant talks about the fact that they're moving all the traffic onto Shasta. The good news is there are 170 people who probably need to park in this building, and 100 of them won't be able to because there aren't enough parking spots. It's wonderful to think about public transportation. Where the hell are we gonna get that public transportation for people who want to not use cars to get to their office? Not everybody lives in Los Altos. Not everybody, not a, a lot of the 170 people who are working in that building are not going to be living in the 10 rental units. This project is D O A. And I believe that the Planning Commission would be doing the applicant a favor by simply asking them to start over from scratch. This project will not get better by simply tweaking it a little bit. There are fundamental flaws in this project that I don't believe can be fixed at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John Bear. I see another hand raised. Ferris, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Alyssa Ferris. We own a condo directly across the street at 101st Street. And my biggest concern would be light that would be lost for a lot of those units. The first-floor units are already quite dark, and this feels that, you know, we would lose a lot of whatever light there might be. And was wondering if there's maybe another spot where apartment buildings could be placed, as I know it's, you know, very valuable to have in downtown. But I do worry about the height of the building for the apartments, the condos that already exist across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, did you say your name is Melissa or Alyssa?
Alyssa.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, give me one sec here. I seem to, there. I have another speaker. It just has iPhone.
Hi, this is Richard McCaffrey. Hello?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I had some technical difficulties from my computer, so calling in.
Okay, go.
Yeah, so my name is Richard McCaffrey. I'm 31 years old, grew up in the Bay Area. More specifically, grew up in Los Altos, right by Royal Corners there. Went to St. Simon's, St. Francis. And unfortunately, all of my friends, they all moved away, you know, because they couldn't afford the cost of living in Los Altos. And I think this project really honestly is a good first step in, you know, bringing some of the younger people back into the area. You know, a lot of my friends, they always go out in downtown Palo Alto, downtown Menlo Park, right? Going out to get dinner, drinks, or whatever. And, you know, downtown Los Altos really isn't a place for young people. And eventually, you know, we need to build the next generation. So I think this, you know, this building has, it's honestly a great step in the right direction to bringing Los Altos to the next generation and keeping in line with the rest of Silicon Valley. So this project definitely has my full support.
Thank you very much. That's all the hands that I see that are raised right now. So Chair, if you want to open, or just, I guess, if we want to allow anybody to unmute themselves, and if you can state your name, we'll allow you some time to speak.
Yeah, I'm gonna open it up to see if there's anybody else.
I don't, I don't.
All right, so seeing, seeing no one else. Typically, when we're hearing a project for approval, which this is not, after we've heard a public comment, we give this, the applicant, a couple minutes just to respond to.
Hello, can, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have just unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Will you introduce yourself? I assume you want a public comment?
Yes, my name is Mark Powell. I'm, I live in the building that is right behind this project at 226 West Edith. And I've also been on the Board of Directors for 27 years. One thing that hasn't been taken into account is the impact this building is gonna have on us. This building is going to dwarf our building. It's going to put us perpetually in the shadows. And if you'll notice, next to the garage, you'll see a wooden gate. This is where we have access to Shasta Street, and our residents use that all the time. With all of the traffic that's gonna be on Shasta Street, that's gonna be a problem. And I would also like to point out to many people who've been talking about rentals and, and age. We have a lot of children in here now, as our demographics have changed. The children use this exit, as do many of our elderly residents. With a lot of traffic, high speed going in and out, trucks, I mean, that's, that's a safety consideration that we need to think about. Previous speaker named John said this thing should be redone and should be scaled down, and I agree with that completely. This is way too big, and it's out of character, and it doesn't fit in with this neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. And I don't have any other hands raised. If, again, if we want to allow anybody else to unmute themselves, otherwise we'll close the bubble comment.
Okay, great. Why don't we give the applicant same three minutes, if you can, to address if there were questions you heard or specific comments you want to address?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you for that. So I made a few notes, you know, I'll start from the last comment. So there is an eight-foot easement at the back of the property. That gate would be maintained. And, you know, certainly, if we, you know, because the pedestrian area out of that gate is at the end of Shasta and is past the garage entrance, I wouldn't anticipate significant traffic at that point. But if there's, you know, we would certainly be open to, you know, building a pedestrian environment there, crosswalks, et cetera, if, if Public Works felt like it was warranted. Talking about parking and unbundled, all of the residential parking will be gated and secure. So none of the residential parking will be co-mingled with the office parking. That'll all be secured behind a gate, which is required by code. Again, the goal is for people who live in Los Altos to be able to work in Los Altos and to create a quality of, of office space that permits that. And so, you know, that's why the building has showers. We allow folks who, you know, we force the tenants to allow folks who ride their bikes to take the bikes to their desk, because a lot of these guys have nice bikes, and they don't want them sitting, you know, in, in, in storage. We, there's all sorts of things that we can do as part of the Transportation Demand Management Program to reduce impacts, but also to encourage and incent people to ride their bikes, use public transportation. And that comes in the form of monetary payments even to these employees that choose to do that. And so those are all TDM measures that we'll be talking about with staff and, you know, that we'll bring back before the commission, when, when, you know, when the time comes. But other than that, I don't think there was anything else really for me to address. So that's, that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's open it up for discussion among the Planning Commissioners and for feedback. Now, again, this is intended as a study session. So we can talk about, you can address the height, you can address the parking. But in addition, please give feedback as to, you know, the design elements and address the architectural integrity and any other feedback that we'd like the applicant to make or to consider before they come back with an actual application that we will. So anyone want to start it off?
I can go.
Great, thank you, Ferris.
Um, okay, so basically, to prep for this item, I was looking at other developments in town. So the Safeway in downtown to the top of the highest point is about 50 feet high. And the projects that we have approved recently on the other side of First Street are all around 50 or under. And then the mixed-use building at 420 South San Antonio, 52 feet. And then when you get to El Camino, whether it's 4898 El Camino, which is five stories, or 5150 El Camino, they're all under 60. And so my point is, is that I cannot seem to find justification to allow a four-story, 62-foot-tall building on First Street. So to me, there's that component. Then you add to the fact that it's, it's a very underparked building. Obviously, there's been projects where we've made exceptions for parking and, you know, but to be 100-plus spaces under, again, it's, it's just hard for me to find justification, and that's what I try to do. And then you also mentioned using it as a public parking lot. I'm not sure, based on its location and access point, I'm not sure how many residents would actually use it because it's away from the, from the downtown core. And then the lifts, you mentioned that it's either kind of one or the other, but there's been projects where they've been implemented in certain areas of a parking garage, so I think you could do both. So, yeah, I think getting closer to that parking number, I think, would be better for everyone involved. Then the architectural style, which I don't really think has done itself much favors by having elements that kind of exaggerate the size of the building. You have two-story windows on the first floor, and then columns that go up around 30 feet. And it's just not taking into account the, the human scale that we typically like to see. I think one public comment mentioned that they didn't know what that meant. It basically just means designing a building to the proportion of, of the human dimension. So, you know, having the, the entryway that's about 25 feet tall, and then the glass opening above it, that's, you know, 30-ish feet tall, and then the tower that extends even higher than the 62 feet. Again, it's just not taking into account the, the human scale that we've approved in the past. Basically, the building is 62 feet, but it's designed in a way where it looks taller than 62 feet. So I, I just think that, you know, you have to think about the plate heights, the window openings, the, the architectural elements, the articulation of the massing, all of these things, I think, need to be a little bit more explored. The, the other thing is, it doesn't feel like a mixed-use building. The, the residential component just feels kind of like an afterthought. I think it would really benefit the project to make that top level just feel differently with different materials or colors, or just organizing it differently. I'm not sure if it's the best decision to have office and residential on the same level, but, you know, that's up to you. But it just felt a little odd seeing that. What else? And then, yeah, I mean, I like the project overall. I, I like the affordable units. I like the mixed-use building concept, but the way that it's currently presented, it's hard for me to justify. And I, I just think it would be in your best interest to modify the building in such a way where if you do end up asking for variances or exceptions, then we can judge them fairly and realistically because we can compare them to other projects instead of having this be kind of the, the random example. So, yeah, those are all the comments I have for now. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Maris. Who wants to go next? I'll go, I'm gonna go on a counterclockwise on my screen, so I see you, Eric, next.
Okay.
Your feedback?
Yes.
And just, I'll tell you, I see Eric, then Dave, Susan.
I want to follow up in a sense on what, what Maris just said and some of the others. To me, this is a very simple question. The project is simply unlawful. We just spent $225,000 on a consultant, three study sessions involving the City Council and this commission, five meetings of this commission, significant chunks of three city council meetings, and I have no idea how many hundreds of hours of staff time coming up with the objective standards, which are required by state law. This is asking us to throw those out, and we can't do that. More importantly, we should not do it. I want to point out that all of these objective standards say that you shall do something. Occasionally, they say you must. That language is directive. It, it is mandatory. These are not suggestions. These are not recommendations. These are not guidelines. They are rules. And nothing in this follows those rules. This isn't a question about variances. Variances are defined in the government code. This doesn't come even close to qualifying for a variance under the government code. And it is our law. We follow it. We expect applicants to follow. This is all new to everybody. This was just finished last year. This is the first project that has come up under the new regime, and it is a new regime. It is completely different from what was before. We are not flexible. We cannot be flexible. We offer the objective standards so that applicants will know what's expected of them, so that staff will be able to help the applicants meet that. At the same time, the flip side of that coin is applicants have to follow the rules. And, and so for that reason, this is just completely not acceptable from the get-go. Also, I am frankly astonished and offended by the perversion and misuse of the density bonus law in order to get a bigger building and avoid the parking. The density bonus law exists to promote and facilitate housing. You build a certain number of units. You offer some below-market-rate units. You get to build more residential units. It is not intended to allow you to build a bigger office building where you get to charge market rates. I don't care whether you're renting them or not. This is just not what the density bonus law was intended to do. And when you're asking that we end, allow you to, to underpark the thing and, and build this metastasized building based on a misuse of density bonus, the answer is no, at least for me. So I think those are two ways in which this project simply cannot move forward in its present state. And I'm not sure that any of this can actually be fixed. So that's my take on this. I think it is completely wrong-headed, and it simply cannot be approved. It cannot be recommended by this commission. I don't think legally it can be approved by the City Council as it's currently set. So. I'm done.
Okay, Dave?
Well, I'm not really in a position to, you know, what Eric says, I don't, I don't, I don't, mightn't respond to that. And so those are all, those are points that I suppose, if true, don't leave much, much room to say anything else. But I will say that I thought the building looked very nice. I thought it was a very generally pretty building. I think that the concept I like a lot. I agree with some of the people who spoke about, you know, trying to attract younger people and trying to revitalize the town. I think that that's the right plan. And I think that something like this, you know, definitely has the potential to do that. So I, I might also understand that if it's, again, you know, if it's too high, maybe it can be lowered. But, but I think that, you know, I hope that this is not, you know, this doesn't become so discouraging that, that either this effort or some other effort doesn't, doesn't continue to try to do a lot of the things that I think this project was trying to do. I only one comment otherwise was, I was worried about, I worried about the sidewalks. I don't know if that, if it, I'm not sure if I'm right, but I. I don't know if that, I'm not sure if I'm right, but I hate it if the sidewalks in that part of town are shrinking and I'm not positive they are, but it kind of looked to me like maybe that would be the case. But that seems like very, very small in comparison to the larger issues of, you know, is it legal? So that's all I got.
Not very much. All right, go ahead, Susan.
Okay. You know, I share many of the comments that have been made, and I too can't really comment on some of Eric's comments, but I'm sure staff will get us informed on those points. You know, my initial reaction when I was preparing for the meeting was, this is a project that was designed to be an office project, and they added on a floor of residential units so they could get variances and bonuses. So in that way, I sort of share some of Eric's sentiments on that. It was helpful hearing that you do do mixed-use developments. It's something you want to do. I appreciate the fact there's rental units. I think it would be nice to have some different sizes of one bedrooms in a studio. I appreciate the fact, too, we're below market, but it still just strikes me, this is an office building that is massive, too bulky, too, it just doesn't work in that part of downtown. It would be, I think, from the, what Mira was saying, the tallest building in Los Altos. That is a crazy place to have the tallest building in Los Altos. And I think you just have to work and come back to us with something that is just not so huge. And I'm not talking, I guess what I want to say is about the mass and size of it, not so much the square footage, although I think you are getting every last bit of square footage out of that place. But you need to work on that, and you need to make it such that it doesn't seem like the residential units are an afterthought to try to get some variances and waivers. As is currently, you know, shown to us, I just don't see how I would be willing to go forward on it.
Go ahead, Richard.
Well, when I initially received this, I was appalled that it would be submitted to City of Los Altos, small village atmosphere. I took a good look at it. I also looked at some of the buildings that we've recently approved. Your height is currently way out of line, and as you admitted, you maybe have had the wrong height for your 17 feet for your first floor. You have some room where you could reduce the height, and I think that would make a big difference. I'm also subscribed to the, what's been mentioned a couple times. I really believe that you added the apartments, 10 apartments, which is, would make no difference in Los Altos at all, strictly to get the density bonus. That way, thereby, you could raise the height of the building because you'd have the density bonus. I don't know if that's true or not, doesn't matter. But the appearance of having 10 units and two measly apartments below, with low income, would make no dent in the housing affordability problem anywhere. The parking is, and I think you can do something with height. I think you can reduce the floor numbers. I think if you can get it down from 65, get it down 20, 25 feet, I think you got, maybe have something there. The parking is, to think about it, you're, by the standards, you're 100, a little over 100 parking spaces short. If you drive around the First and Second Street, I counted about 25, 20, there was 32 parking spaces curbside that would be available for the public, for tenants to park in of that building. Where are the other people going to go that are going to be working in that building? My concern would be they're going to do what they do in Palo Alto, where there's inadequate parking. They're going to go down, they're going to go into the residential part of the neighborhood. They can cross East Street, and they'll get on Los Altos Avenue, and they'll park on that, and they'll park in Oak, which are two very beautiful streets, on the tree-lined streets. You're going to have, the people are going to go somewhere to park. And like in Palo Alto, they'll walk three or four blocks to get to their job. So the parking is an issue that's got to be figured out somehow. I do think it was interesting that you mentioned the benefit of having it open nights and weekends. I don't think there's, it's the foreigner town. I'm not sure that there's an inadequate amount of parking at night, at least when I have been downtown, which is frequently at night, there is always parking available. The weekend, I can't see with the building at that end of town that it would have any benefit with it being open. So maybe you do some lift, maybe you add another floor parking. But I think there's two issues. I commend you on the high quality. I do like aspects of the design. I do also support the comments made that it's not humanistic. It's, they're tall, it's a huge building, that with the quality is wonderful, but doesn't just, it's just massive. And I'm certainly, in its present state, would be one person that would not be able to vote for it. I think you got possibility to reduce the height, and if you can figure out something, you get some more parking. I don't know that the management department, the management parking, transportation management parking is going to, how that's going to adequately reduce it. The Packard Foundation did it, but I don't think the Packard Foundation has got 50,000 square feet of office space. But it's certainly an idea, and you might, it might work out with some support. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so I, I want to find a way for, to, to help this project become more palatable for folks, recognizing that there are some that just will never be satisfied with it. And so I think in terms of addressing the height and the parking, I'll start with the parking. I think you can try to re-engineer a little bit to get more parking, whether it's using lifts or proposing a smaller dimension, I'd start there. Just get the number up because it's too great a deficiency. And then when it comes to transportation management, I would look at what the Packard Foundation has done and some of the other offices to encourage more use of public transportation to reduce driving. And, and also, I think we have to have a real, better understanding of what is the realistic number. And I do believe that we overpark our offices in Los Altos. I think that we aren't consistent with other standards in other towns, and to the extent that you bring us that information, I think it'd be helpful to make that a compelling case to show that the number that we have popped out, our formula, is maybe too much. And then I will say, I think it's worth mentioning, and I feel like a broken record, but we should have a parking and lieu program. If an applicant came to us with 100 short spots, then they would pay for it. And in every other town, every other town, we, they have parking and lieu programs, and we have been resistant because we were afraid, the folks who don't want development don't allow us to put a parking and lieu program because it would then allow development. But what it's doing is we are leaving money on the table. We're going to get this development no matter what. It's coming because developers aren't going to walk away from these investments. And what we're doing is we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not having these parking and lieu programs. For 100 spots, at $10,000 a spot, we'd put $1 million into the city's coffers. At $20,000 a spot, we'd put $2 million into the coffers. So you have to thank our city council and for not investing in a parking and lieu program because I have said it every single year that I have been on this parking commission for years. So that's, we talk about budgets and how are we going to raise money and how are we going to deal with our deficit. A parking and lieu program is literally low-hanging fruit, and we are losing money every single time we underpark a building. So you can't just put it all on the developers because they would pay for solutions elsewhere in our city. That money would then go to put a parking garage on one of our lots or help with other solutions. And by the way, smaller projects face even bigger obstacles to parking than this one. But I do think you should find some more parking, go deeper, re-engineer, come up with some solutions because that is just something that is just really not palatable to a lot of residents. And then in terms of the height, I mean, I feel like there, just from our discussion about plates, that there is a misunderstanding on how high you need to be. And if you start at 12 feet and then 10 feet, you will get this building shorter, which will, which is, I think, what your intention. I don't think you want to be the biggest, tallest building in downtown Los Altos. That would, that would look strange. And so I would also say, you know, that to me, it is not productive. I think we should have our city attorney at our next meeting so she can explain exactly what we can and cannot do because I feel like I have seen this movie before where a developer comes and on principle, we say, no, we can't allow this for this height, and they just, we just block it. And then what ends up happening is, you know, how you use the density bonus, and, I mean, 40 Main is a prime example. They wanted a three-story building, and it was blocked and blocked and blocked. And this resistance at any cost rather than trying to collaborate and partner with developers to get something that is amenable, not, you know, one side wins all, ended up resulting in what will be a 66-foot building that is five stories with only 15 units, and this one has 10 units on top. So I like this mix. I think it's good to have more commercial. I think it's beneficial to have more rental properties. I like that they're small in size. I think it's going to serve a demographic in our community that isn't typically served who need small spaces that are inexpensive and they can't afford to buy. So I think you can get the height down. I thought Mira's made some excellent points as to how to do it architecturally. I didn't understand the architectural style. I know I've seen on your, you know, website and other projects that you've done that you do really high-quality projects. It didn't read that way in these images, but I imagine this was, this is your first shot. So I, my hope is that the quality and the integrity will improve. I think there should, I don't know what the style is. It's not modern. It's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to tell. I feel like you need to do a little bit more, put some more details. I think the project across the street, 100, first, has some really nice details in their railings and the color and the material for, you know, something that was approved years, years ago. And so I would, I would make, I think you will, I think we will see more of that. But I would pick an architectural style and then really, you know, lean into it. I agree that the two-story windows just exacerbates and exaggerates the height, and so to the extent that you want to reduce that, I think those are easy fixes to bring it down. I agree that there is such prominence to the commercial entry, and then the residential just feels like it's nondescript, and I would make it special and feel like it is a residential component to that building. I do think the Shasta wall is kind of intense in the height. I would like to, I like that balcony. I would like to see a reduction and a pushback on that third story, and it's in our design guidelines, so I don't know how we, you really can get around it. But I do think that Shasta's like a, it's a, it's a dead-end street, right? And the next, across the street, something else is going to go up that's going to probably be of the same sort of height and mass eventually. And so it's not actually in my mind where pedestrians are going to be crossing, but I am, I did hear the neighbor say about, you know, the use of it by their, the kids in their complex, and I don't know if you are open to it, but, and I don't know how productive it would be, but I think it is helpful when developers do have like an open house where they do, we open it up to meet with the neighbors. I would urge the neighbors, don't, don't show up with the, with the idea that you're just there to block and stop the project because, but rather to partner and collaborate and to find some common ground because it doesn't work in our city when we have one contingency anti and one pro, and it's a winner-take-all because projects are going to get through. If you've just, you have to just live in our town, you have to read the news, you have to just see the reality. And I know that each time a new project comes, people are outraged all over again, but like, just look at the projects that have, that we are paying the attorney's fees of the developer on 40 Main because of obstinance and resistance to partnering. So I hope we don't go down that road. That would be futile in my mind. So I would encourage more generous landscaping around the property so it really creates a more pedestrian feel. I think the project across the street does that, which by the way, also at points go up four stories. So I wonder if there's a way to sort of be more complimentary so that it's not such a drastic difference from one side to the other. And in terms of the materials, I also think that there's an opportunity there to minimize the massing. And I agreed with really everything Mira was saying related to how to do that architecturally. And then in particular with the plate heights, to the extent that you, if you are comfortable with going lower with your building than what, than what maybe our requirements require for a commercial building, I think you should come to, come, bring that back to us because I, if faced with the idea of, you know, an extra two feet from the top of the building versus taking out of a second floor, that if you think that it still has commercial appeal, right, then I think we'd be open to that. So those are my, those are my thoughts. Anyone have anything else? No? Okay. Do you feel like you've got enough guidance from us?
Yeah, I have a couple questions, you know, through the chair if you're willing to allow it. Assuming we are able to get the height down considerably, which just from some of my back-of-the-napkin math here, I think we can, you know, easily do that. And, and, you know, we'll continue to look at the parking and see what we can do as far as lifts or TDM programs or whatever. I will say that we were shocked that Los Altos didn't have a parking and lieu program. If that was an option here, we would be paying you millions of dollars. And instead, we're not, and we get to get in a big tussle over parking instead of Los Altos being able to invest those dollars in their parking lots or whatever. So anyway, you can take that for what it's worth, but we were shocked. Our initial submittal anticipated in lieu parking, but then we were informed that that plan hadn't been cemented yet, and so there was no in-lie parking. Reduce height, parking requirements, I hear you loud and clear, pedestrian scale, the two-story windows, the Shasta facade. What might be helpful is if any of the other commissioners that didn't speak too much about architecture, if they just spent one second and assumed we could get the building height down and assumed we could figure out a way on parking to, you know, meet a middle ground, are there any other architectural comments that could help us design this building in a way that would be better? Because what I don't want to do is be able to, you know, reach those objectives and then come back before you and say, okay, well, now that you fixed it, you know, I want to talk about architecture. So, you know, we'd certainly like to get any and all of those comments out, assuming we can, you know, address some of the concerns that were talked about.
I mean, I think, I think the way Mira framed it was that to the extent that there are tools in an architect's toolbox that they use to, you know, elongate versus, you know, create more verticality.
Right.
Create less, create less verticality, right? So you break things down. I don't know that the tower needs to be, you know, the highest.
No, but I think we got great comments on architecture from you and Mira.
From others, you're saying, understood.
Yeah. What I'm trying to do is just get an idea of, and, and I, and I'm sorry, this doesn't show me all of your names the way it is, but, but there were several commissioners that made But, but there were several commissioners that made zero architectural comments. And so I would love if they can just set aside, they're discussed with the project for a minute and, and comment directly on the architecture, assuming the height and the parking issues can be, can be looked at. That would be great. If they don't want to give me any of those comments because I am an offensive developer with this project, then that's fine, too.
I'll, I'll jump in here. You know, I'm not an architect or a design person by training. So, you know, I'm going to leave it to the people who maybe know a little bit more about this. But what I can say, to me, it's an uninspired facade. And, you know, many people have commented about the building across the street, which granted is residential. But I think pretty much it's uniformly thought in town. That is a very well-done building. And to the extent, even in a commercial building, you can incorporate some of the detail to break up the mass of this. And again, I don't know what the tools are that are available to an architect to do that. But I know this doesn't do it. And I think many of us have also looked at other commercial buildings. And I'm fairly new to the planning commission, so I don't have the depth of knowledge of some of my fellow commissioners. But I kind of agree with what was said is, it's not really clear to me what the style is here. It's kind of Mediterranean because of the tower and the, some of the materials, but it kind of isn't. I would, I would just would like to say, make a statement and make it interesting. I don't know if that helps you at all, but.
No, it does. It does.
And, and I think the tower at the center is just, again, it probably goes to height and mass. I just don't think that works, but.
I might add a comment.
How to go?
Go ahead, Richard.
Just to clarify, I thought the quality appearance of the building, I don't know if I made it clear in my discussion, looked very nice. The, it, it just, it's, I really find the building attractive. It's just too big. If there was some way you could maintain some of the appearance and the quality and reduce it. I like the long windows. It gives, maybe, and maybe the long windows work good to give you the height and the needed areas. I didn't say anything about the one side of the building, the west side or the side facing Edith. I don't think there's any windows on it. I think it's a blank, it's a blank plate. I'm not sure that our standards, the standards allow that. I think we're supposed to have windows and maybe on the staircase areas, you could have some upper windows for light or to break up the blank wall. That's not a big issue for me. The, I think, it's just, it's just big. But I, I like the, I do like the design, whatever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add, I, I think there's, there's a way to use, you know, different materials and different ways of articulation to, to kind of create that effect of the building kind of pushing in and pushing out, whether it's horizontal articulation or vertical articulation. And yeah, you know, I think that with the, the windows being so vertical, it kind of just makes everything look taller than it really is. And I think that with some minor adjustments, I think you could, and, and some softer materials, softer colors, especially for the residential, the top level. I think if the top level feels just lighter, then the whole building is going to have a different effect. So, you know, I would maybe look at projects that we've recently approved or that the council has approved, look at like strategies that they've used in terms of massing, because, you know, some of those, we, we looked at them several times and had to go through all the different checkpoints. So, yeah. And then, sorry, one thing I will say, if maybe the residents could, could not have this ongoing chat going, just because it's kind of distracting. If maybe we could just hold off on that. I know everyone's really passionate about this project, but I don't really like everything I'm seeing. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, that's just one agenda item for us tonight. So why don't we, why don't we close that matter?
Thank you for your time.
Okay. I see on the calendar, as the next item is election of chair and vice chair.
Probably needs some explanation. And I apologize for not letting you know ahead of time. It is almost nine o'clock, but I think this might be a quick item. And then perhaps you'd want to take a break and start the, the next item after this. But basically, we were asked by the city clerk's office to go through the motions of electing a new chair and vice chair. And the reason for that is we're a little bit out of sync with the commissioner handbook, which for this commission is supposed to seat a new chair and vice chair in October. I'm not sure exactly, Chair Bodnar, when you were seated, I was trying to find that information and why something got out of sync, so.
We had, it was in June and maybe someone retired. I think we do it April sometimes and in October and other times, but.
Yeah, so you're right. There are certain commissions that do it in April, but this one, it's designated for October. So for this meeting, for this item, what you could potentially do is if there is a motion to elect Chair Bodnar to continue, that would go through September and then a new chair would be seated in October. On the other hand, you could, there could be a motion to elect a new chair and vice chair. Vice Chair Doran is not at this meeting, but you do have, you do have a, a majority of the commissioners here. So that's, that's the explanation of this, this particular item.
Well, I'm happy to make that motion if it's okay with our chair.
Sorry, mustn't extend the term till September.
Extend the term.
And I was going to suggest that we wait for Commissioner Doran to see if, where she was at on it. But, um, I mean, I am comfortable with it, if others are comfortable with it. But I'm amenable to.
I'll second it.
Having deja vu.
What you need from us, Steve?
I'm sorry. So I heard there's a, a motion from Commissioner Mezinger to, to keep Chair Bodnar. And then the second was from Roche. So.
I can talk about the vice chair and ask if she's willing to stay in her position. I don't think we can move that at this meeting, but we could certainly do this one, unless you want to combine them at the same time.
That would be up to the commission, whether, whether you want to delay that. I see there's Director Simpson is on this call as well, if she has any recommendations.
I would think you could probably do it at the, at the beginning of the next meeting, since you are missing one person, one commissioner, and do both at the same time. I mean, unless, Steve, you had received other guidance that it had to be done this, this meeting.
I don't think there's specific guidance. I think it was more to try to sync up with the commissioner handbook. The next meeting would be February 17th. So just curious if any of the commissioners know right now, or I guess if, if both Chair Bodnar and, and Vice Chair Doran would be at the next meeting. And so long as there's a majority of the commissioners here. But if, if one of those are absent, then we're kind of pushing it out again, so.
Well, I would say my own thought is that there's no reason to rush. If we wait another two weeks to make sure everyone's here, then we can clean it up. If we're already out of sync, we're out of sync. And two weeks won't make that much difference. So we can put it back on the agenda. Because I didn't know it was on the agenda. I didn't see anything about that on the agenda, so that, that might be another issue.
Sure. So I think Commissioner Menzinger, if you want to take your motion off the table and I guess officially table it for now, then that would be the process.
Yes, let's officially table it till the next meeting on the 17th.
Okay, so noted. And then again, it is just after nine o'clock. It's your choice whether you want to take a little break now or continue.
Sure, why don't we take a break? How long do you propose? We have, we have the consent calendar and then we have a discussion related to the housing element that I believe we probably have some speakers on that, too. Do we still have a lot of folks? Yeah. Okay, why don't we take a brief break?
It's 9:05. Do you want to come back at 9:10 or 9:15?
Why don't we say, anybody have a strong preference?
I prefer more than five minutes, so.
Okay, so 9:15.
So we'll, we'll reconvene at 9:15.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Reconvening here. Don't see Commissioner Roche yet. I don't know if we lost Commissioner Roche.
I'm back.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, it sounds like the first thing we have to do is consent calendar. Minutes from our last meeting. Anyone have any comments or emotions?
I'd be willing to move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, I'm in favor.
Aye.
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 Just for the record, it looks like everybody voted 6-0.
Great. Okay, moving on to the discussion of the housing element update. Turn it over to staff.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Laura Simpson, the interim community development director for the city. And I'm not going to repeat everything that was in the staff report, but I did want to just highlight a few things about where we are in the housing element process. And then would like to spend most of the time hearing from the commissioners, your feedback on the questions that, that I'll discuss. And we'd like your feedback on constraints to housing development in the city. But where we are now is we, we've really spent the last few months on education and outreach in the community about as to what, what the housing element is and what it's comprised of. And we have done this through a number of means with our consultant, Lisa Wise Consulting, and their subconsultant. We've, you know, included a website. And we've updated that regularly with the feedback that we've received from the community through small group meetings, through pop-ups and an event, which was our first community workshop in January, which had 66 participants. And we continue to do those small group meetings as well as other events and outreach, including next week, we'll be talking more with the business community and working with various businesses throughout the city. One of the, the next items that's coming up is our second community workshop, which will be on March 1st. And that, at that workshop, is going to be discussed the sites that are proposed for the housing element. So that's been an item of great interest for everyone. And so we will have a map of the potential sites and where they are in the city. We will also have a map that will indicate where we might expect some rezoning to occur or need, that might need to occur to meet arena numbers. So our regional housing needs allocation. And so we have 1,958 units that we're required to meet. And we want to go beyond that a bit so that we have a bit of a buffer in case certain sites don't get developed at the capacity that we project. But having said that, so we will have that discussion on March 1st. And we will also post something on the, the website. We will post that information ahead of time so that people have a chance to look at it prior to the meeting as well. And it will be a similar format to our last community meeting, where we will break out into small group workshop or small groups for input and discussion. And we will post that. We have posted the community, the first community workshop on the, the website as well already. There will also be a postcard that is going out within the next two weeks to every resident of Los Altos, which will bring to their attention key dates and what's coming up, particularly the workshop, but also other dates that are coming up that we might be discussing, where we will be discussing the housing element. Just overall, as many of you know already, as we've discussed, we will bring forward a public draft of the housing element in April. And there'll be a 30-day comment period where we will receive comments. And those will be addressed or incorporated into the, into the housing element. And then a draft will be brought forward in a joint planning commission and city council meeting, which will probably occur early June, late May or early June. And will be to state HCD in July. So by the end of this year, after we've received HCD's comments, we will bring it back to the planning commission and the council for final adoption by the end of the year. So with that, we did receive six, I think we received six letters this evening that were in your packet. One might have come in after, after we posted. So, so if it's not, if it wasn't posted in your packet, it will be posted if you haven't. We will just be sure that we've gotten everything on, on the website in with the packet. The questions that are before you this evening that were in the staff report, what we'd like to hear from the commissioners are what, what regulations do the commissioners find are most critical in limiting projects from achieving maximum density? And some examples of these could be parking requirements, building height, lot coverage, or other. So we wanted to hear your thoughts on the constraints and, and also in the challenges in obtaining city approvals, whether it's the, the process that they need to go through or the number of hearings that they might need to, to achieve approvals or other issues that you're aware of, having been on the commission or seen projects go through the process. And then if you have any suggestions or ideas for reducing those constraints, we, we would love to hear them this evening. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to, to the commissioners. Thank you.
Great. And I just want to open it up to the commission. Well, sorry, we should start with questions and then we should have public comment. And then we should have our discussion, right? Okay, any questions for, for, what, what they need from us or any questions? Okay, all right. So then why don't, why don't we move to public comment on this topic?
Steve, are you able to?
Yeah, I, I can. I, I guess just a clarification. Since this is more of a discussion item, we might want to have the commissioners discuss and then followed by a public comment. But that's up to the chair, how you want to handle the, this. But that's up to the Chair how you want to handle this item. Do you think that would be correct, Director Simpson?
I think it could be done either way.
I'm interested in, if the other Commissioners are okay with it, I'd be interested in hearing from the public and then have our discussion.
Yeah, I think public should go first.
Okay.
So once again, if you do have a public comment, raise your hand. And then we can kind of orderly call, call all the people in orderly fashion and also understand how much time to allocate. Right now I see three hands.
It's two minutes.
Okay. Let me get the clock while people are finding their hands to raise. Okay, so. The first person I see is Roberta, if you want to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Roberta. Can you hear me? Is that a yes? Okay, thanks. So one of the big concerns of the residents in Los Altos is the R1 district. Because we do want to have a variety of, you know, housing in Los Altos. But you know, R1 not to be impacted, not to be upzoned. And I'd really like Laura Simpson to address that issue. Because apparently, we do have another, you know, we have, you know, 20 zoned areas in our city. And apparently with projects like 5150 and other along that, you know, my understanding is that there is a potential for R1 not to be impacted. So I would like to hear about that as well as, you know, the impact on Loyola Corners, the impact on the PUD. Because, and of course, the impact on San Antonio Road, which I'm very concerned about because of the fact, as we mentioned before, there are several blocks somebody center that are all residential, do not have sidewalks, and are suffering from overflow parking now. And would really be undesirable, although people think it might be desirable because it's a bus, but it's not a major transit route. So those are sort of my comments of, you know, we'd like to know, you know, the methodology of how people are going to get to this 1,958 plus number. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Terry Kircher.
Hi, it's Terry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for listening to us tonight. Our biggest concern with the people that I talked to that have bought in Los Altos, and I'm speaking as a Realtor and also a resident who grew up here. We cherish our open spaces. We cherish our big backyards. We cherish the ability to move through the town with relative ease. And we hope that the R1 districts will be saved from turning into condo districts. We didn't buy in a condo district. People who buy in condo districts know they buy in condo districts. People that buy in a single-family house don't want a towering building next to them. The people on Distal Circle complained vehemently about that. So I want to try to make sure that everybody knows what's going on before it's decided on. So everybody has a chance to speak. And so that the Planning Commission and the City Council will listen to the residents who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I need to reset my timer here. The next speaker that I see is Ann Paulson, and if you want to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Planning Commission. This is Ann Paulson. The point of the housing element is not to write some words and give them to the state. It's to get more housing for our community. And as I said in my written comment, we are in big trouble if we don't convince HCD that our housing sites will result in actual housing being built. Or we'll also be in trouble if we don't actually get the 843 market rate homes built. I don't want a disgruntled builder to come in and build a 20-story building, but they could if we fail. So I'm very glad to see you tackling the important subject, which is also a required subject, of removing constraints on building. I've made some suggestions, and I know of at least three other letters with lists of suggestions on what to remove. Many of these suggestions overlap. Also, I know that the city has met with developers to ask about constraints on building. And I hope you pay particular attention to what the developers say. For example, according to tonight's applicant, our parking requirements make it difficult to build a project that's all rental. But it would be nice to have projects that were all rental. So we need to get the red tape out of the way so we can get more homes for people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker that I see is Janine Valadas.
Good evening. I echo many of the programmatic solutions and alternatives that are represented in the letters. I participated in writing one of those letters. So I won't repeat that here. I just really encourage the Planning Commission to take a read. All this talk about how residents don't support housing, there are so many of us that do. And there are ways to gently increase density in the R1 district without building towers. You know, it's not a doomsday scenario. There are parts of our city already, even without upzoning, that have gentle density increases over the big, you know, half-acre, third of an acre type house like mine. They don't all have to be that way. And I just really hope that we, the commission and then ultimately the City Council, agree to programs, to endorse programs that will allow housing to be built throughout our city. Because we do have the requirement of having fair housing throughout and not just to create dense zones that are isolated from the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised. But at this time, if anybody would like to speak on this item, you can unmute yourself. And if you can state your name for the record, that'd be helpful.
I'd like to speak.
Sure, I believe that's John Bear. You have two minutes.
You know, there is this concept of orderly development. And orderly development says that you're thoughtful as to where you place housing so that you don't have conflicting usages, you don't have conflicting issues around light and height and privacy. And while it sounds very egalitarian to say we're going to put, you know, housing everywhere, you know, we see firsthand the challenges along El Camino. We see the need for, you know, stepping down housing from tall housing to townhouses to single-family residential. And, you know, I would encourage the staff and the Planning Commission to not lose sight of orderly development when we look at where we put additional housing. It's not a question of, it's not that people want or don't want it. It's a question of creating something that is orderly, that reduces conflict, and that creates quality for everybody who lives in that housing, regardless of the type of housing. And, you know, there are underdeveloped lots in places. And frankly, a lot of them directly above single-family residential. And by putting allowing buildings that could be over 50 feet tall directly adjacent to residential will create some significant problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, if there's anybody that would like to speak on this item, if you can unmute yourself at this time. I don't see any hands raised, nor does anybody else unmute themselves. Chair Bodnar, if you want to continue with the discussion.
Okay, let's open it up to discussion. It sounds like Director Simpson wanted our feedback on areas that we think are good, is a good investment of energy and resources and time in terms of increasing housing. So I will ask. Mero's start first, and then we'll continue in a circle, then Eric, Susan, Richard, Dave.
Okay, so I thought we got some really good letters and information from a few residents, specifically Ann Paulson, the League of Women Voters, and Jill Woodford. So I don't want to repeat everything they said, but I think those should be sent to the consultants to take a look at. I think there's a big parking constraint with many of the zones in downtown because we don't have a system in place, which we kind of were talking about earlier. Specifically in the CRS and the CDR3 zones, which are basically very difficult, if not impossible, to develop because of the parking systems. So I think that the city and the council at some point needs to seriously consider the possibility of putting a parking garage in downtown and then designating parking spots in that garage to those housing projects. You know, a lot of research would need to be done on that, and we need to figure that out. But that's something that is directly related to constraints for specific zones in downtown. Another issue is SB9. I personally think that the way we've established SB9, there's not enough of an incentive for residents to take advantage of it. Los Altos is obviously entirely R110, but the R110 properties are very different depending on where in Los Altos you are. So I think that we really need to examine how SB9 is going to be implemented depending on those different areas. Because one property might be very narrow or small where there's, there might not be an incentive for them to split their lot. And so, you know, that's where we have to maybe look at increasing FAR or coverage, not by a lot, but just to make it more fair so that everyone can implement SB9 in the same way. In terms of city approvals, you know, I'd like to know what the process is for a project in terms of how many planning reviews, how many building check reviews, what's the timeframe, the third-party engineers that give building comments, what's the process with coordinating with them and the city? I know I've done projects in cities where that process is extremely time-consuming, just coordinating with every division and addressing comments, receiving comments. So is there a way to make that easier? Also, this is something I see in other cities where the requirements and the list of items is the same if the project is a five-unit project or if it's a 100-unit project. And I think that by really looking at the requirements and categorizing them based on the size of the project, I think that would really help a lot of these small-to-medium-sized developments and encourage them to do housing. And then, you know, finally, this is something I've mentioned for years now. I think the story pole policy needs to be removed entirely. I think it's something where former council members have said it's simply used as a warning sign. It's not used to design the buildings. It's not used to help, you know, figure out the buildings. I've been on the commission for four years. We've never used it. We've never referenced it. It's simply just something to alert the residents and even scare the residents. So, and there's a project, 4350 El Camino, which has been delayed for over a year solely because of the story pole policy. So that's proof that it needs to be removed immediately or yesterday. So, yeah, those are all the kind of the big things I had. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Eric.
I confess I was confused by these questions. And I just want to run quickly through them and then address a couple of the points that Mero's made. The first one assumes that we somehow block maximum allowed density. Our code requires maximum allowed density. So I'm a little confused by this question. I'm wondering, are we just checking off a box or is this an actual issue that we have to deal with? Because as far as I can tell, for multifamily housing, at least that aspect of it, we are, applicants are required to meet maximum allowed density. As far as this hearings, we have the number of hearings allowed under law. This is something that has been particularly in the last year. It may have been an issue before, but if things have continued, it's with the consent of the applicant. And that's done mostly by the council and not by this commission. And given the current legal constraints on the number of hearings, we've been very creative in doing joint hearings and that sort of thing. And that would be to jump ahead a little bit to some of the points that Mero's was raising about SB9. It might be a good thing to have a joint hearing between the Planning Commission and the Design Review Commission because this is something that that involves the intersection of those two commissions. And it would be very productive, I think, to have that sort of thing. And since SB9 is new to everybody, nobody really knows what's going on. It would be helpful to have that. And as far as the last one, commission have any ideas for reducing or modifying? So far as I'm aware, the city has not denied any application for development, at least since the moratorium, which ended in, what, 2017 or whenever that was. And the constraints that I'm aware of are constraints on the part of the developers. They can't get financing, for example. So every single project has been approved. If the developer comes and pulls the permit and starts the development, the building clock, then that's fine. But if they don't pull the permit, the city can't go and chase after them and say, hey, 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 build this, build this, build this. Okay, so the constraints that I see are not things that are necessarily within the control of the city. And they're certainly not constraints imposed by the city. It's the pandemic. It's the economic conditions. It's whatever. But it isn't that the city is saying no. The city keeps saying yes. These things are not being built for whatever reason. Okay? And so I'm a little, that's why I say I'm a little bit confused by these questions unless we're checking off a box on something. And to get to some of the points that Mero's made, I can't talk about 4350 El Camino Real. But I do think that so far as non-multifamily housing, that is to say things like SB9 and some of those, it would be productive to have, as I say, particularly some joint meetings with the Design Review Commission to see what they have to say about that. And so that we can put our heads together. And it's possible, I don't know, because I don't really know the whole process. But it's possible that some of that could be streamlined, particularly since it doesn't involve the kinds of hearings under SB330 that multifamily housing would have. So those are generally my thoughts.
Thank you. Susan.
As someone fairly new to the commission, I'm going to draw on some of my background from being on the Downtown Building Committee, which granted was not really housing, but it was just development in general. And the comments that we heard as we were looking at policies then was, it's just really difficult to get anything done in Los Altos. It's time-consuming. It keeps changing. And as a result, it adds to our cost. Translating some of that to the housing side of things. Translating some of that to the housing side of things, I think we need to separate multifamily housing, which is a different process from the SB9 residential housing. I think a lot of residents, probably some of us on the commission, are really confused how SB9 really is implemented and what it really means. I would suggest that the city or somebody has some workshops just to educate people about it, because it may be people want to do it, it may be people don't know where to start. Let's make, let's let people know what's out there. It may scare people. It may not be as scary as it might seem. With regard to multifamily housing, I agree with the comments in terms of we need to do something about parking. Certainly, that's an issue in downtown for any development there. I also think we should, and that would also frankly have a parking loo, there should be ways that we can achieve the parking and also make it then easier for people to build more multifamily housing. I would also say some way to encourage and make it easier for joint ventures. And you look at the Distel Drive project, a great project for affordable housing. It's a result of a joint venture between various partners. Maybe we can help other people do that, and that, I think, would be very helpful here in getting, using some of the land we have, whether it's church parking lots or some of the other land that's there. So I would say encourage people to look at that. But I think it comes down to bringing the cost down of development for affordable housing, if that's what we're kind of focusing on.
Thank you. Richard?
Well, I honestly think that, being new to the commission, I don't have that long of longevity. I think we really need data and analysis. I'd like to sit down with the planning commission or planning commission with the staff and go through the various zones and analyze where there could be, where there is additional potential or lack of potential. And from there, we could earmark where we have potential for sites. One thing I think that was just mentioned by Susan was places of worship. They have large parking lots, lots of them, and that are unutilized a great deal of time. If we could somehow joint venture, we might maybe a way to do that. Let them know that they have this land that has the potential for housing, either for their teachers, for the schools, the churches, the place of worship that has schools, or for the teachers in the community, firefighters, whatever, that there's potential there that in most places is just sitting vacant all the time. But I really think we need to go out and I need some data. I don't have a lot of knowledge on question two. I would like to know what, from the time we approve something and it goes to city council and finally ultimately gets approved, maybe staff, again, I know we're short-handed, we don't have enough employees, but we need to know how long does it take from that initial application to get through us, to us, and then get back to city council to it getting approved? Then we can really decide what the bottlenecks are and how to reduce them. I, and that's pretty much, it covers item three. I just think we need to know where the delays are, how long's it taking? Maybe it doesn't take that long. I know if you're building something in town, it's, it's an incredible continual delay. Seems like one department doesn't know that this was approved and there's delay in getting it. And I've had specific neighbors that have gone through projects. Doesn't seem like it's going from A to B. It's essentially going from A to C, and then it goes back to B. So maybe more work has to be done there. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I don't, I have nothing to add on this topic. Everything, I think everyone said it. So, thank you.
Okay, so I also appreciated the letters that we got, and I thought in particular there was one that was really, really helpful. I'm blanking on which one it was, but it was one that highlighted ADUs in our city. And I feel like I totally understand that R1 is like a lightning rod, the idea of upzoning. But it feels like ADUs have been like a very effective, they have, they have been utilized very effectively in the last few years. So the the letter that I received, and I'll figure out who it was from, but it highlighted then in 2015, zero were built, and 2021, 70 were built. And that in that period, 140 units were created while you, when you add up all of the units created in mixed-use, multifamily, or single-family development, it amounted to like 110. So in the same time period, we just like grew tremendously. And the speed that you can put up an ADU is significantly faster. And they are by definition affordable because they are smaller units and they allow for multi-generational living. So you can have like, multi-generation isn't like me with my children, but like two set of adults living in a space where you have like an elderly parent who can be in the space, or you have an adult child. And so by definition, they are affordable, they are less expensive. I was just reading of a company, I don't know if they're legit, but it popped up in a feed of mine that was like a BUDU, 199,000, they can put 600 square feet in your backyard and installed in a day. So I feel like that is a solution that maybe residents can get behind because it is not going to affect the R1. They won't be as worried about like four, you know, homes, townhomes going on a lot next to them, but really like a modest-sized ADU that is complementary ideally to the main structure and that allows for lots of different demographics to tap into. So I would encourage us to like do and explore all avenues that will help increase the creation of ADUs. And I imagine that, you know, different cities have come up with creative ideas to encourage it, and I would see what they're doing to get our numbers up, because I think that is going to be far less impactful than, you know, even buildings. The other thing, I agree with Mayruss about the story polls. It was a scare tactic that was implemented, and I don't think it's particularly effective, and it's a waste of time and money. And it is actually causing delays. And so I think what's happening, you know, when we talk about like developers can't get financing is because projects take too long. From the point that they pencil it out and it makes financial sense to the point that it gets built, at that point, the costs have gone up and it no longer makes financial sense. A project that was three stories now only will make sense as a four-story. And so that's why they come back with then a fifth story the next time. So if we can help the process go faster, then I think we're more likely to actually see them getting built. And then one other area I would focus on, I mean, there are a lot of good suggestions in many of these letters, and I think if all, everything's a priority, then nothing becomes a priority. So I would figure out what are like the three or four areas that we can get the most, get the most housing. And so those would be mine. And the other areas, I do believe that there are areas of our town that still have number of units per acre, and that is really antiquated, it doesn't make any sense, and it's probably not even legal. So I would clean that up. And I'm in favor, I mean, I don't think it's about gently upzoning. I think like we have to make some radical changes to deal with our housing crisis, in my view. I'd like to see it happen sooner because I would like my children to be able to afford to come back and live in this area. That was, you know, important to me when I was growing up here, and I, so I think we need to do a lot in a little bit of time, and I think we can focus our efforts in a few areas and see progress. And then lastly, because I am a broken record, parking. There's so many areas. This is a low-hanging fruit. I've said all, I don't need to repeat myself because I've said all the different ways that we can do it. There's like a commission report that's probably five years old now that lists them, like just, and we had, we hired a professional at one point to evaluate them and opine on whether they made sense. They did then, they do now. It's overdue. Those are my thoughts.
If I could mention one thing, thank you all for your input. That was great. Because our one zoning has come up, in terms of what we're seeing based on our analysis to date of sites, we don't, we don't see the need to rezone any R1 at all. And so we're just focusing on more commercial areas or publicly owned or faith-based owned properties. And so partnerships, like you've talked about, is something that we're looking at. So just to address, because that was brought up in some of the comments or the public comment. But I appreciate all of the comments here, and I would say in terms of ADUs, we did see a definite increase over time, over the past few years in ADU applications. I think we had 100 last year. So it's definitely on the increase in terms of ability to submit and have those come through the approval process. So, and that's, that's all I had, and I appreciate your feedback unless there are any other questions for me.
I wonder if, Commissioner, can you send us the parking study that you just referred to?
Oh, God. The located, like, sure.
Give me a link, link to it, it would be great.
Yeah, yeah, somewhere. And let me see if I can just, I wanted to identify which of the letters that we received that kind of highlighted all the ADU information, but it's probably not important. But anyway, that came through, and that was, that was really helpful.
I think it was Ann Paulson's letter that I think it was.
Yeah, yeah, she broke down all the multifamily units, super helpful. And I agree with you, I don't think we need to do anything with R1 because the state is kind of handling that, and that is a whole can of worms that we probably don't want to step in.
And I will be back on the second meeting, second planning commission meeting in March, just to give just another update as to where we are in progress. Okay? Great. Thank you.
Let's see, I think, do we have any reports? Or comments, items to put on the agenda? Anyone attend a city council meeting? No? Okay. All right. Any future agenda items?
Sure. I can report back. I believe it was the January 25th council meeting, the project at 441 First Street was approved. Just to report that back to the planning commission, that was the four-unit project that you saw, I want to say back in November, maybe. There's a little, a little holiday break and then got it to, to the council. So with regards to upcoming meetings, our tentative agenda for February 17th, there will be a project, another First Street project, 376 First Street, which is a four-story building with 15 residential units. That will come before you. We will likely be bringing the annual housing element progress report to you. And then March, the first meeting of March, which is March 3rd, we have a couple potential preliminary project reviews similar to tonight with study sessions, a project at 14 Fourth Street, which is a four-unit project, and a project at 996 Lorraine Avenue, which is a 12-unit project. Those are kind of tentatively scheduled, and there will be a public hearing for a two-lot subdivision at 705 Vista Grande Avenue. And that's all I have. I think past that, we're probably, yeah, we're not, we're not quite into the second meeting of March other than the housing element update at this point.
Steve, would you give us the dates for the Fourth Street and the Lorraine, when are they going to be discussed?
Yeah, those will be your first meeting of March, which is March 3rd.
Thank you.
Tentative right now, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, everyone, thank you, and good night. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, thank you.